I hereby call the City of Buellton City Council Meeting for September twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. To order if I could get Vice Mayor King to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And we are. A pleasure to be here. The United States of America and to the Republic of the which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Linda, if I could get roll call.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here. Thank you. Public reordering of the agenda. Chanel Zamora is running the meeting tonight via Zoom. Chanel, do we have any reordering of the agenda?
No reordering of the agenda this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to public comments. This is the public's opportunity to speak on anything they want to on the agenda, off the agenda, compliments, complaints. You got three minutes. I have one speaker slip. If anybody else wants to speak, you need to fill out a slip. In the meantime, Pam Nico, please step up.
Thank you, Mayor Sierra. Thank you, Council. I do have a public comment. First of all, I want to thank the Council for for voting on us to receive the NG Award for the nonprofit. It just means so much to us right now. We're we are right in the middle of starting a new veterans program. That's where the money is going to. We're hard at doing the construction, getting ready for the October nineteenth from ten thirty to one thirty. We're having an open house. The the road will be shut off and we'll be having lunch served. All veterans, everyone, and you don't have to be a veteran. Come and see what we're doing with the veterans. We'll be partnering with Allen Hancock Student Veterans, Veterans who are students. They are going to be there. They're going to be helping us. The Band of Brothers are going to be from Santa Maria are going to be over there and serving you. And then the USDA has named our organization as the Veterans Food Distribution Center. This is really important. I think it's really great for Buellton because there's only two. One is at the Armory at the Santa Maria Fairgrounds. And the other one is right here in Buellton, and that's us. And there was there's none anywhere else in the county. So we're really excited about this. We're really excited that this is happening and seeing where that's going. So thank you very much. To help with that, we're having a fundraiser on October first, starts at either twelve or one, depending on VIP opens up at twelve. Journal admission opens up at one. It's a very unique car show. There's got a lot going on. Ramon Bacara will be there performing. Maggie's Dance Studio, Los Salivos Dance Studio will be there performing. Three Rivers Band, Charlie, Mayor Charlie. His band will be there. It's going to be a really great day, a lot of food. Bill Agen will be will be barbecuing as well as Lee from the Also. It's going to be a good time. So please come, please call us. It's Cars and Cowboys. That said, now, I know this is probably over three minutes, but I'm talking for somebody else tonight. The Chamber of Commerce and the Educational Foundation asked me to come and tell you about a candidate forum. So on October sixteenth at Oak Valley School, they will be running, they'll give the candidates an opportunity to talk, answer questions. We'll be having some vans that will be going and picking up seniors at both of the mobile home places so that they can get there if they need to. From one to two will be Zone One candidates. From two to three will be the mayor candidates. From three to four will be Zone Four candidates. And then after that, they'll be talking about the school bond issue. So it'll be a full day. I think it's pretty great that the Chamber and the educational foundations doing this. So hope to see you there. That's my spiel. Thank you so much. And I can't tell you how fun it was to not be up here asking you for money.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. We have minutes of August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved or ratified for payment to date for fiscal years two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. The monthly treasures report, August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, proclaiming the continuing need to meet by teleconference. And our last consent item is the Law Enforcement Services Agreement Amendment Number Two. Any questions for staff? Any motions?
Move for approval.
Alrighty, Linda.
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi, thank you. And I wanted to also thank our legal attorney, Mr. Murphy, and our city manager for all the work. Months and months of work that went into the Law Enforcement Services Agreement, not quite what we wanted, but a lot better than what we were given. So thank you very much.
Second that.
Okay, moving on, presentations. Ms. Zamora, do we have any presentations tonight?
No presentations tonight.
Thank you. Any public hearings tonight?
None this evening.
Thank you very much. Councilmember comments slash items. I'll start down with Councilman Sanchez. Any comments or items?
On comments, I'd like to thank the Chamber for the mixer last night. It was a really good time at Rudy's and good turnout. And I had a good time there and they're they're nice people to come and they close their business for us and and that's pretty nice.
Cool. Vice Mayor King, any comments, items?
Yeah, I'll just per what John said. Yeah, it was a great time over there.
Councilmember Lewis, nothing? Okay, and I just want to three of us went to the League of Cities Annual Convention in Long Beach a couple of weeks ago. Was it a couple of weeks? Well, it's not really. Anyway, very informative and a very welcoming city. Anyway, that was nice. Alrighty, Ms. Zamora, moving on. Do we have any written communications?
No, no, we're in communications.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report? I see Councilman Sanchez.
I do. We had a CCWA meeting today and there were some some things about the we have a we have some procurements we have to do and they changed the budget a little bit, but I think we're doing pretty good. They're they're looking for a new safety officer. And but it was a good meeting. There was only two people in the chambers and the restaurants.
Okay.
Anyway, and then I also went to a chamber meeting Tuesday, and that was a good meeting, too. And part of that chamber meeting, I was thanking them for bringing their their things to the to our League of Cities presentation so that we won an award and so that by winning this award, the Arts and Culture.
Why don't you add the Helen Putnam Award? Why don't you explain it?
Yeah.
Well, the Helen Putnam Award, so we there was only twelve, there was twelve awards. And so presented all the cities, there was twelve cities that won awards and they were all for different things.
Three hundred and something cities.
Economic development and a lot of
It was a big deal.
Different things. So we were one of the cities, so for having been one of the cities, we have our own booth. We had our award presented. And we got the stuff from Kathy Breland, gave us a nice presentation. Claire came because she's on Arts and Culture Committee liaison. And we got we all kind of went by and showed all our pride. People were stopping by, looking at our award and and looking, reading about the city. And it was a very really prideful event. And I want to thank everybody, Scott, for getting in. And it was a nice deal.
Our city manager submitted our application and yeah, that was a big deal.
It was a big deal because everyone, we even had tags of award winners and stuff, so.
Go Buellton, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, go Buellton.
Thank you.
Dave, did you have any?
I just want to ask John if there was a mention in the CCWA, there was something in the water. Did you guys discuss that?
Yeah, we didn't discuss that. That was something that I think the water is moving too slow. They had to treat it. They had to they've had to buy more charcoal to treat it. And but that wasn't on the agenda for
Okay, did you have any committee reports? Many reports for you? Long Beach was nice. I had a library advisory committee meeting yesterday. And although the big news is that Buellton will be moving next year into the Willamson House. Yay. And that's coming up later tonight with some photos. They're also working on figuring out how to, the county doesn't want to support the libraries. They don't want to be the umbrella for the library. So there's a special ad hoc group. Judith Dale is one of the members trying to figure out how to how to get money for libraries because it's it's the state isn't taking care of us and it's it's getting expensive. And they're so important. Anyway, so that was Library Advisory Committee. Alrighty, moving on to our business items. Agenda item number six is the annual report for January one, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one from Visit Santinas Valley. Do you want to make introductions, Ms. Zamora?
Yes, I'll go ahead and introduce Shelby Sim, CEO and President of Visit Santinas Valley Annual Meeting. He will be presenting tonight the two thousand and twenty-one presentation of all their activities. And I now turn it over to Shelby Sim.
Thank you very much.
Shelby, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Sierra, City Council. It's great to be here tonight. It's, I think the last time I presented was in the deep dark days of the of COVID and it was a Zoom meeting. So it's great to be here live. And so I'm not, I'm here at the League of Cities, so I don't think anybody made it out to our annual meeting a week or so ago. So I appreciate the city manager, Scott, inviting me to come tonight to present. And so I'm kind of just going to go over what we did a couple of weeks ago. And and I'll go as fast or as slow as you wish. It's very entertaining. So if you want to put that on presentation mode there.
Are we not?
Click over here on the sky.
Okay, that one right there, that one?
No.
Nope. Hang on. Did it work?
See how it goes. All right, so go ahead. I would also like to say congratulations on your award. That's a big deal. But it's I want to share how we won an award and to be amongst the world and win an award for our small valley, especially Buellton is a really big deal. And I also enjoyed yesterday's mixer at Rudy's was fantastic. Wow, food was good. All right, this is SYB staff. You got me, President CEO, eight years in now. Danielle Lauderu's Vice President of Marketing, I believe she's been there ten years, my golly. And then we picked up Brenda Ball from the Solvain CDB and Visitor Center. And she's blowing us away with her tech skills and how much she drives to help our SEO. Amazing. All right, our board, I'll just go over them really quick. We're missing two, but we got Stormy Strickland of the Hotel Cork. We got Jim Flag of the Hampton. We have Linda Johansson of Pea Soup. We have Dave Moser of Sunstone, Kathleen Cochrane of Bacara. No, back in the day, I used to work for her there. She is now at Alisal. And Will Henry of Pico, as well as Lumen Wines, and then Rear Scholl, who is a daughter of Fest Parker. She's a marketing director for Fest Parker. We're missing Kimberly Walker of Skyview and Hotel Yunes, and Jonathan Rosensen of Coplico and First and Oak. All right, so in two thousand and twenty, April, we paused dues and did not charge dues for over a year and a half. And then we started to charge dues again last November, and we're very pleased that over ninety-three percent of our members came back. It's very easy to, when you lose a line item, not to come, not have to pay that. And people came back. So we're very proud that people continue to support our organization. Thank you. You're doing great. Thank you. All right, so just, you know, we partnered with the California Hotel and Lodging Association, and we supplied masks and sanitizer throughout the pandemic. We have a bunch. So if the City of Buellton needs themselves, if they find the self that they need, we've got it for you. Let us know. Please. And you know, as we all know, the message has changed daily. And so websites had to be changed. We were on top of that constantly. A lot of what we did was just changing our website. Come to the valley, don't come to the valley, literally don't come to the valley. And then when we did start to open up, it was very important for us that to not only that the visitors felt safe, but the residents felt safe and how all the things we were doing. Go ahead. Thank you. All right, so just go through a couple of campaigns. In two thousand and nineteen, we premiered the World of Experiences. And diverse offerings in Santinas Valley. Go ahead. Thank you. And then we did, this is our the second video we ever produced, and this is also towards the end of two thousand and nineteen. If you do a double click on this one, or it'll start that little double click. Perfect. All right, push it, start it. Let's watch. I think this is a thirty-second one.
Okay, where do I start?
Just press in the middle. Or on the where it has the little arrow.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. No.
Or not.
Should work in the PowerPoint, right?
Yeah. Maybe go to the other one I was talking about before, escape out of that.
Wow.
Go to
Hang on.
The one that looks like a rejected.
Okay. Okay, so.
Not that one, next one.
This one?
No, no, sure.
The slideshow?
Yes. But not that page.
Okay.
Double click past this page. Double click. You don't want this. No, no, no. There, let's see if that'll Oh, what a bummer. All right, no videos today, guys are so good, too. All right.
Huh, sorry.
It's okay.
Right.
All right, we also came out with Santinas Valley Personalities, six distinct personalities that described our six distinct communities. We had the culinary traveler, the wine enthusiast, the culture lover, the adventurous friend, the sophisticated cowboy, and the charmer. And the campaign ran and drive markets. And so if you were to click on the culture lover, they would take you to these other pages.
Do you want me to do that?
It won't. It doesn't. That's not it. No, just click it. Yeah, thank you. Good. And then also at the end of two thousand and nineteen, we premiered our Place to Be campaign, which has been incredibly successful. We see no fatigue whatsoever in this campaign. It is still going strong. It's really put us on the map. It was, it lends itself to exploring the active interests in Santinas Valley, the place to be adventurous, connected, in love, together, thirsty. Go ahead. And go ahead and click again and see if see if the video will start.
Try this.
Yeah. It may not with Zoom.
It's Zoom.
Sometimes. Is it's going through Zoom? That could be it. Yeah. Okay. Go on. Really good video. I'll send that to the council so you can see it. We also came out with, this was in two thousand and twenty-one, yeah, two thousand and twenty-one. We came out with see you in the SYB. So more of a focus on the communities and that make up the Santinas Valley. We'll see you in the SYB. A content forward approach. So not only did we have campaigns, we also utilized existing content, blog posts, that kind of thing. So a three-pronged approach in our digital campaigns. And that's just what I just said right there. Okay, so target markets. Of course, Los Angeles is our bread and butter, Palm Springs, San Francisco, California, Central Valley, longer drive markets, direct flight markets, Las Vegas, Phoenix, and all those you see listed there. Yeah, so that's what that's what we're hitting. Go ahead. And then again, like I said, we have the three different creative campaigns. And then we have the different campaign of building awareness and brand building. And then the third being visible and available to audiences through their custom journey. You know, if you click on a Santinas Valley ad at any time, that's going to follow you around everywhere you go. So you'll see ads for the Santinas Valley. We have just started a geoconquesting, geoconquesting is folks that we can pick folks that are going to Temecula or that are going to Paso. And if they're going to either of those spots, we can send ads to them to to put Santinas Valley in their thoughts and their minds to make them think about what do we want to go to to make all the time, or maybe we want to go Santinas Valley. So it's just a way to capture that, a newer audience in a more technical way. Santinas Valley, as we know, I'm sorry, the Restaurant Weeks, as we all know, very popular in the valley, very popular with residents. It really gives a chance for frontline staff to experience restaurants that they may not be able to any other time of year. We pivoted during COVID and we had that we did the takeout edition. And it was very popular, not only with us locally, but with national press. It really put us on the map on how we pivoted and provided that. And just a couple of Restaurant Week stuff. And then coming out of COVID, we knew a lot of folks were driving, not flying, and work and remote working. And so we came and our neighbors were doing all kinds of stuff for a hundred bucks if you stay here kind of thing. We wanted, we didn't want to hand out money. We wanted to stay in the community. So we created the Midweek Membership Club. So this was the trial period. And so if you booked a stay in the Santinas Valley between Sunday and Thursday, you'd get sixty dollars in credits at our restaurants and wineries, that kind of thing. Huge success in our, just the two months that we did it. So that being said, this year, first quarter for three months, we did the Place to Be Midweek Campaign Membership Club, and we went digital. We 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 had software, so it made it all automatic. So when you went to the restaurant, you could click and get your twenty-dollar voucher. The restaurant was automatically reimbursed, and we upped it to a hundred dollars worth of credits for Sunday through Thursday. And we did that through our slowest time of year, January, February, and March. We came out with Discover the Santinas Valley. We have two seasons in the can now, over twenty-six episodes. They premiere in on Sunday afternoons in San Diego, the desert cities, Orange County, and in Santa Barbara. And we reached almost a million households every Sunday for over a year. And and now all of those twenty-six episodes are up on Amazon Prime as well as YouTube. And here's a great little teaser for it. Hope you're enjoying that.
Want me to try it again? This doesn't want to work. Bummer.
So press, living up to the hype. Again, COVID has been good to us in the fact that people don't want to go to big conventions. They don't want to be in a room with two thousand people. The downtowns are still struggling. Our big cities are still struggling. We are strong. We we are matching our twenty-one numbers right now in occupancy. Wide open spaces, you know, lots of room, outdoors boutique, people want small, and we are killing it. Yes.
I I went into this and I read the articles from ConNas and Travel and Leisure. Incredible job, just incredible job. Those are big magazines.
Is there, right? We're on the, we're no longer a best kept secret. We've arrived.
It's pretty cool. It was pretty cool. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. So again, yeah, Travel and Leisure, top fifty places to travel in the twenty-two. Now, they did actually add space into that to travel. So we're actually the top fifty-one places to travel in the universe.
Okay.
Yeah. Forbes, very cool. Bloomberg. And I mean, it just keeps coming weekly. We're just continually get great stuff. And what we're particularly proud of, they're not saying Santa Barbara, they're not saying Santa Barbara County, they're saying the Santinas Valley, which is really, really cool branding. Two thousand and nineteen, we came out with Taste of the Santinas Valley. We partnered with Wine Enthusiasts as well as the Santa Barbara County Venders. Very successful. We also do pop-ups. We go and not necessarily to sell wine, but to promote our sense of place. So that you taste our wine. We talk about how beautiful it is and how chill it is and how welcoming it is to get people to want to come and spend time in the vineyards where these wines are done. Huge Sunset Magazine's first ever wine guide, and we are on the cover. And it's Santinas Valley.
Now, where is that one?
This is Sarita Hills.
Okay.
And that is Los Alamos. That's, yeah, on the cover, the very first wine guide, Sunset Magazine. I think it's Tyler. I heard that. Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
And then, as I said before, we we travel to do pop-ups to to other communities that are like-minded, that we feel are the same kind of clientele to promote coming out to the Santinas Valley. We've gone to two different trips to Telluride to again, get those bigger wallets to also come out to the Santinas Valley. uh, bigger wallets to also come out to the Santinas Valley.
Have you gotten anything from Telluride that you know of?
Uh, that's a good question.
I mean, besides planting the seed.
Right, right, uh, you know, it usually takes three or four trips to, to, to do that, you gotta go to a trade show three times, everything's, we've been there twice. So what we're doing is building respect in the Telluride community, uh, right now, so that we can be more powerful and more of the towns talking about us while we're there. It's a, it's a building base. Alright, we have an app. Discover Santinas Valley, you can get it at, uh, at your web store, at your app store. Uh, we've had it for a bit now, and, uh, it's been used by almost nine thousand folks, and it's been downloaded, uh, almost sixteen hundred times. It's kind of an itinerary builder, uh, you can map out, you can search for what you want, and that kinda thing. We won an award too. Uh, so we, at the US Travels, ESTO, which is, uh, Educational Summit Tourism Organization, uh, in Los Angeles, and we won, uh, top digital campaign for the place to be. Uh, again, really big deal, uh, we were, you know, against the world up there, and for them to honor us was great. I really wish we could show this video, uh, but we can't, but this is the video I took. Uh, where it actually had us up there against Visit Savannah and San Francisco and visit the Santinas Valley. And the bedlam that took place with our name ended up being the.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you, uh, as you know, we have a grant program, and so we support, uh, events throughout the valley. We also support things like the, the enchanted lights.
Botanic Gardens enchanted lights, December second.
Great, uh, and so of course during COVID, uh, there wasn't a lot going on, so we didn't do a lot. Uh, but over the last three years, we've done almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We are way over in our grant giving this year, and our board is fine with it, and we're gonna continue to give and support the community and, and everything that they're doing. We're also, um, I would say leaning towards, more towards resident things, and what are we gonna make the residents happy? We wanna bring the residents along with, with all that we're doing with tourism. So we, we always keep in mind now, besides is it good for tourism, is it also good for the residents and community residents? Where the enchanted lights are perfect, because that's, that's everybody, yeah. Alright, so I'm gonna kinda finish up here with a new product that we have, it's called Zartico, and, uh, it's very interesting. We can define our traveler, we can follow our traveler, uh, we can, uh, track our traveler. Uh, it's done through anonymously, through cell phones, and, uh, and visa spending. And so go ahead. Uh, so we know that visitation in twenty twenty-two has largely returned to nineteen levels. And, uh, the top five markets, uh, share out-of-state visitation and share overnight visitation is comparable to twenty nineteen. So twenty nineteen, benchmark year, we're back, we're, we're back, go ahead and go back, one please. Uh, the big, the outlier is though, that the visitor spending has increased twenty, thirty-one percent, now compared to twenty nineteen. So people are coming here and leaving more of their money here in the community. Okay, go ahead, thank you. Kinda says the same thing. Uh, out-of-state, in-state, and then again, the outlier is that thirty-one percent more stand spending than, than they did in twenty nineteen. Where do visitors go throughout the Santinas Valley? This is really interesting, so the blue is twenty nineteen, orange twenty twenty, yellow twenty-one, and green twenty-two. And you see that, uh, solving, this outlier was solving is because, Visit California, they only trap, they only advertised within state in twenty twenty. And, uh, that's what year that is, right, twenty-one? And solving had, you could travel to Europe domestically, you can drive to Europe. And so that's why it's all so strong, but you can see Buellton is right up, up, there as any other of our other big towns. Another interesting one, you see the gears, and then the colors. The green is an overnight stay, the yellow is a long day trip. This is a two-hour day trip, and that's like thirty-minute day trip. So we're winning with occupancy, which is what we are primarily Hotel Association. Most of the folks that come to visit the Santinas Valley are staying overnight. And then what are they mostly doing? Accommodations is the big winner, food, attractions, outdoor recreation, retail. You notice wine isn't on there. Uh, we have an opportunity figuring out wine, because the credit cards do not have a wine column. Wine can go under nightlife, it can go under attraction, it can go under food. If they have an Airbnb, it can go under, you know, uh, accommodations. So it's all split out, so we're still working with this company to figure out a way that we can track the wine, because it's kind of a big deal in our area. Top five markets, no real big surprise, Los Angeles always number one. What we really learned from this is there's a lot of staycations going on, that not only are Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, and San Luis Obispo coming here, but they're staying overnight. They're not just coming for the day and going home, they're coming here to escape. Okay, this is something that I wish we could go live to, but we can't. This is an actual visualization of everybody coming to the Santinas Valley, where they're coming from San Diego's Valley, where they're checking in, and then where they go once they check in. So the blue is in-state, orange is out-of-state, and the white is just so heavily dumb that, that they merge into the light. But we can show over like a three-month period, everybody coming in and where they're going in the Santinas Valley. Close it out with, uh, Taste of the Santinas Valley coming up this year, November third through sixth. Uh, and we're gonna have all those things, and, uh, we did it in twenty nineteen, it'll be a lot different this year. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we had the Sideways Festival here. Uh, but this year on Saturday, Saturday's Built-in Day, uh, we're going to do a tasting and bites with local restaurants. The wines will be focused, will be Sagarita Hills and Buellton wines, and it'll be at the Men and Hall Museum. And then there will be a long table dinner at the Men and Hall Museum, once it's dark, you see those neon lights, uh, featuring, uh, industrial eats, itching post two, and the new Giorgio's at the Parkway.
Wow.
Yeah. Closing out, uh, yeah, I wish we could show you the video. And then Taste will end with a closeout concert at the newly refurbished, uh, festival theater in solving. That was gonna be the end, and then we got this, like, uh, uh, just two weeks ago, uh, Sunset Awards. World-class wine region, not Santa Barbara, love Santa Barbara, we love Santa Barbara. But it's the Santinas Valley, world-class wine region. And then it, then let us name the reasons we keep returning to this fertile California Valley with more than a hundred wineries, an array of family farms, notable hotel openings, and a renovated open-air theater, among others. If you're looking for rolling vineyards, this is the place to be.
Congratulations.
I will, I'll shoot you a Dropbox with those videos if you wanna check them out.
I'd like to. Thank you very much, any questions?
The visualization, yes, you betcha, yeah. And that, this company is just three years old, so we're kinda growing with them, they really built the product for a defined city. And the Santinas Valley is anything else but a defined city, you know, so there's, so we're growing with them, we're really excited about the potential there, yeah.
I tell you, we've had record T O T and sales tax. A lot of it is our chamber, but a lot of it is credited to your visit Santiness Valley.
Yeah, amazing, absolutely, thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Okay, agenda item number seven is the Sheriff's Department Midyear Crime Statistics Report. Um, Chanel Zamora, you wanna introduce?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Um, I will introduce Lieutenant Garrett Tesla. He will be providing a presentation on the crime statistics for the first six months. This will be the first of two presentations per year, uh, we are expecting, uh, these type of presentations to be ongoing every six months or so. So now turn it over to Lieutenant Tesla.
Thank you.
Hi there, welcome.
Good to see everyone.
Welcome.
Um, yes, this is something that I wanted to bring, uh, with me, uh, at the, you know, the half-year mark, and then at the end of the year mark, just to keep you apprised of our activities and where, where we stand, and where our priorities are, and, uh, kind of a, a state of the, a state of the crime in the city, so we'll, uh, go through that.
I'm trying to get you there. Give me a second.
That's fine.
And just so good at this.
No, I'm really not. Okay, where did my zoom go, Rose, I need help.
There you go.
There we go, okay. And how come it's over here? Standby. So where did my presentation, they both went away. Why do they go away? Well, let me just copy, can I copy and paste?
Thank you, Pam.
And then go back to yours. But, but it's not. Anyway, I, I think I can just do this, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that.
From there?
It won't be able to?
No, it'll just.
No, it's not on Zoom.
Okay, I don't know.
First category.
Yeah, right. Category, really.
Appreciate that.
You know, you actually bring up a, a good point, um, you know, I think you all know this, everybody in this room and everyone's listening. Privilege to live in a city like Buellton where we do have such low numbers on some of these, uh, lines. So when you see a fifty percent jump in something, that's just like the addition of one sometimes. And sometimes those things are completely happenstance, and they're just part of the nature of, of the environment that we live in, right? You do remain, uh, a thoroughfare both north, south, and east-west. And, uh, some of these things that we've talked about, or I'll talk about here today, are the direct result of outside actors from outside the city, taking advantage of your geographic location to.
Two freeways, highway.
Two freeways, you're gonna get some of this interaction, right? So we can go ahead to the, to the first section here. Obviously, so, okay, so yeah, I just did, uh, this year to, this year, year to, everything on here is year-to-date. Okay, so not totals for twenty twenty-one, not Q with.
And twenty twenty-two is from January twenty-two or from July one, twenty, do you go fiscal or annual?
This is, this is annual.
Annual, okay, so from January.
Uh, and so, uh, obviously for homicide this year, still zero, as we were last year. Uh, last year, we were zero for the whole year, um, and these are what we call our type-one crimes, rather, see, these are the type-one, the more felonious things that we report to the FBI and then are tracked nationally. So that's why I included these as the bigger ones.
Okay.
Uh, we won't go into the weeds on how many shopliftings versus how many petty thefts, et cetera. So, uh, forcible arrest, we did have one, uh, so far this year. Uh, but again, that's, when we look at that, that's a hundred percent increase over last year, but we're looking at one, and of course, we don't want any. But it is a, it is a crime that we deal with. Uh, robbery, uh, so far this year in twenty twenty-two, we've had three, last year, year-to-date, we've had two. Um, this includes the one in June, that, that was well-known in Houston's liquor, which was really the result of a multi-city and a multi-state crime spree by two individuals out of Orange County who did, several armed robberies, uh, homicide, an attempted homicide, a kidnapping, and a lot of other egregious stuff. And again, just by nature of the valley and the highway, ended up here, needed a little gas money to get out into Kern County, and they found Houston's liquor. Uh, they were eventually caught that same day by Kern County Sheriff's Office deputies. Uh, and one is, one suspect in that case is deceased, and one is in custody. Uh, this number, all assaults, I like to see this, we're down a little bit, twelve, down twelve percent, fifteen this year so far as compared to seventeen last year. Uh, and go to the next slide. Um, now burglaries, again, this is a nice number I like to see, we're down fifty-seven percent on burglaries for the year. Three so far this year, only one residential, two commercial. I fully expect to see commercial burglaries, um, cause that include, that can include daytime theft while the business is open, but also, you know, nighttime activity, uh, when we deal with the residential burglaries, those are obviously the most scary ones for the citizens, they're scary for us. They're scary for everyone involved, they create the most concern and fear in a neighborhood. And so this year, we've only had one so far. Last year, there were seven at this point in the year, two residential and five commercial. And I'll be honest, that I'm a little surprised by this number, and I'm also surprised by the theft number, only in the sense that we're, that's like everybody else, like the hotels we're just talking about. We're still coming out of COVID, and last year, you know, twenty twenty, we saw suppression in a lot of activity, a lot of things. People weren't on the road, people weren't even out engaging in stuff, people weren't interacting to the point where they could get into arguments that would eventually lead to an assault. Right, those kinds of things all trickle out from just people interacting with people. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, when we started to see things lighten up, or, or open up, rather, we started to see more assaults, more arguments, more fights, more domestics, those kinds of things. And I was expecting more of this trend to continue into twenty twenty-two, as things really opened up and people got back to life as normal. Um, I'd like to think that, um, people are kinder and gentler, and I, I'll believe that to some extent, but I don't know if that's the case. But nonetheless, our thefts are down significantly this year, uh, thirty-four year-to-date. Thefts could be anything, theft of property, stolen items from a store, someone leaves their, uh, phone at the restaurant and it gets picked up and taken, um, and that includes felony and misdemeanor thefts. So for, for California, a different street of misdemeanor and a felony theft is nine hundred and fifty dollars in value or less as a misdemeanor. Nine hundred and fifty-one dollars or more is a felony. Um, total value for this year in, in stolen properties down a little bit, a hundred forty-seven thousand over last year, where it was about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in value. And I didn't include it, but we actually did recover a significant amount of them, uh, stolen property too, through numerous investigations.
Does, does that include the catalytic converters that we've had such an issue with?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next slide. Vehicle thefts, again, something I, I thought would continue to rise, uh, but ten this year, same as last year. It is, uh, it is a crime of opportunity, and again, location, uh, I think is just what presents that number to you.
Are, are the vehicles, are there keys in the vehicles, vehicle theft, I mean, are they actually wiring a car and taking off with it, or?
It could be both, a lot of times people leave cars unlocked, they leave their valet key, or they leave an extra set of keys to the car, that's, the vast majority of time, that's what happens, and even in a city, city like we, where we are, I, every chance I get, I tell people, you, you still should lock your doors, you still need to lock your car. Yes, your neighbors are good, fine people, but we have had experiences with, uh, people from Los Angeles, people from San Francisco Bay. They're traveling through, they'll pull off and go start cruising neighborhoods and looking for an opportunity, and they'll just walk down a street, check the car doors. And if yours is the one that's open, and you've got a wallet or a purse or something, you're, you're ea-, you're a sitting duck, unfortunately, you know, and that's not because it's Buellton versus anywhere else, it's just a simple fact that you're accessible to anybody in the public. And that's the same as any, that's the same anywhere in the state. Uh, traffic collisions, I'm very happy to see this one down so significantly, a thirty percent this year with no injuries or deaths. Traffic enforcement is particularly rough along two forty-six, remains a priority for us, and educating people about the speed limit change. You know, coming into town, especially coming from the west, I'll chat up on, chat a little bit more on that in a minute. Um, but yeah, good, good, we're down thirty percent so far this year, and that's a, a good amount. What's interesting is conversely to that, our DUI arrests are up a bit. Um, and I don't think that's necessarily a result of more people driving intoxicated, I think that's more the result of, us having deputies coming to the station who are, who are trained on DUI enforcement and are out looking for it. And so I think that, that, to me, that explains that difference, which number-wise or percentage-wise looks like a huge spike. It's really not that big of a difference, but I think it's because we've got deputies out looking, and they know what to look for.
Good.
Next slide. So in total, felony arrests for this year, year-to-date, we're at fifteen felony arrests. Uh, that could be anything from, again, felony theft, car theft, to felony assault, felony domestic violence, some of the other crimes we talked about, down forty-six percent over last year, we had twenty-eight last year, year-to-date. Uh, misdemeanor arrests also down fifty-three percent. Uh, which are pretty significant over the year before. I think this is the result of a couple of different things, and this is, this is just me and my experience talking and knowing what's going on and trying to evaluate what's happening, but, I think you have two things happening, one is crime is, is going down, as you see, even calls for service are going down. We've seen traffic collisions, those sorts of things, all going down, assaults going down. But what we don't, what you don't see in this is, um, some of the, things that, uh, COVID has caused to make it difficult for, for us to make physical arrests on people with, uh, no, uh, no cash bail, and some of the emergency requirements for us to release people at the scene with a citation versus an arrest. Um, and that carried us through most of twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two, where we, we, our hands were quite literally tied by state law that we couldn't arrest people on a lot of crimes. That just recently changed, so when we stand here next year, at the next six months, I imagine we're gonna see those arrests actually go back up. I don't think that necessarily means crime is going up anymore, it just means a physical arrest is, is going up. Uh, the physical arrest, scary to people, uh, understandably, it's always not something we prefer to do, but removing the person from the scene, getting them booked into the jail, processing in there, gives us a great opportunity to prevent future crimes from happening in those moments, so that's why we employ the arrests like we do. Uh, calls for service are down, that's ten percent. I think that's where you see the reduction in crime. Your neighborhood disputes, your, uh, illegally parked cars, your RVs, those calls are always gonna come in at kind of a low frequency. Those aren't the calls that drop off, the calls that drop off are when crimes are being committed by people and they need police help. So that ten percent to me is explained in those reductions there, if that makes sense. Is transient homeless-related calls, I put this in here, this is a brand-new data point that we're only started tracking this year. It doesn't mean it's illegal to be homeless or anything like that, it's just what are, what kind of resources are we dev- devoting to people who are experiencing homeless? Uh, and, um, that sort of stuff, so we've had, we've had fifty calls so far this year on homeless-related issues. And fifteen of those calls have resulted in some sort of arrest. Now, the, obviously, that means that thirty-five of those calls were not in arrest, they were either social work or trying to get someone services, or just being able to resolve it as a civil issue or something else, um, but we wanna be, we wanna know where our, uh, efforts are going, like, to that stuff. Next slide. So our challenges and opportunities at mid-year right now, as I just mentioned, we have a limit, the state got rid of the emergency no-bail requirement for coded, we can book people into custody. That is a big deal for us because we also opened our North Branch Jail since the last time I talked to you. And we have the ability, uh, to actually book people into custody now, it's not an immediate revolving door of them coming right back out or even being issued a citation at the scene. We have that in our toolbox now, uh, to book people into custody. Uh, we definitely, as you just ta- touched on, we're seeing a huge increase still in catalytic converter thefts. Uh, there are some cars out there that are just unfortunately high targets for those kinds of things, particularly Toyota Tacomas and the Toyota Priuses are easy to get to for, uh, the thieves. It takes about three to four minutes to, for some, for a thief who knows what they're doing, to take off a catalytic converter, and they get a lot of money out of it. Uh, and so what we encourage people to do is improve the lighting in their garage, if they're in their driveways, if they have to park in their driveway, I know it's California, none of us park in our garage. Uh, but if they can park in the garage, increase their lighting, uh, ring cameras or any sort of security cameras that are highly visible, and it's known that you're recording those, all those kinds of things defer or, uh, dissuade people from coming in, but uh, we've seen broad daylight thefts. And so the other thing that people should be suspicious about is if it's any time of day, but if it's, especially if it's three in the morning, as an example, and you hear a hacksaw going on metal, probably a catalytic converter theft, uh, in progress. So give us a call, we would much rather come out and check it out and, and try and figure out what's going on than learn about it the next morning when the victim goes to start their car and has those issues.
You did, you did catch one, though, didn't you, with quite a few, didn't you make an arrest where somebody?
We, we catch them quite often, uh, and, you know, because you have to make noise to do it, that's the best thing we have is when, when neighbor, that's why I wanna, wanted to bring it up here, was when, uh, when neighbors know what to look for, what to listen for, really, then, uh, that's our leg up and getting a, getting a heads up on these people, because we may not get there by the time the, the converter is taken off, but if someone knows what to look for, and they can give us a description of the car, a license plate description of the people, and that gives us something to go on.
Good.
Um, it wasn't a catalytic converter theft, but just yesterday, there was a theft, as this is an example. Uh, there was a theft at the Buellton Albertsons here where they stole a good amount of merchandise and fled before we got here. But a witness was able to give us a good description of the car, not even a license plate, a good description of the car and the occupants, and, uh, the deputies in Lompoc, who was headed westbound, the deputies in Lompoc just sat there at the, at the turn or at the roundabout and just waited. And sure enough, there comes the car, and two people went to jail for theft and a bunch of other charges, and, and it turns out, one of those people was from the Bay Area, who really, we wanted to discourage from, uh, visiting the fine hotels of the valley because it's kind of a criminal history you don't want in a city.
Thank you.
Um, I put this up, this last one, this new state laws prohibiting law enforcement intervention in non-traditional law enforcement calls for service, you know, that made sense when I wrote it, but it's wordy. There's new laws that are really forcing law enforcement to take a step back from some of the things that the public expects us to engage in that aren't directly law enforcement-related. So things like, uh, keep the peace, or how we interact with suicidal people who aren't a threat to the, anybody but themselves. And so there's, and these laws are very new. And there's a learning curve in our own department that we have to eventually bring out to the cities and then out to the citizens about how the state of California is mandating we approach our job in the future, and this will be a series of conversations that we have with you about what the state's expectations are of us versus what the public's expectations are of us, because now they're in direct conflict at times. And obviously, we have to follow the law first, and this, this, our kind of our, our moral authority or our moral desire to do some of these work is now being prohibited by the state, and we have to kind of step back. I only bring that up because that's gonna be a conversation we're gonna end up having, uh, for quite some time with everybody. Uh, our priorities over the next six months, really, you know, into the long-term future, I mentioned traffic safety, highway two forty-six right here. We are fortunate that we haven't had a lot of issues, but it's just a matter of time, you know, I know all of you experience it, you hear it, I hear it from my office here with the car's gun in it, and uh, we, we see it, uh, catalytic converter thefts, as I mentioned, uh, my belief is that, especially if the economy continues to go the way it's going, you're gonna continue to see property crime thefts and thefts of opportunity as people start to struggle more and more just to make ends meet. So you can see robberies, burglaries, and theft on, on the rise, uh, and so our goal is to, of course, uh, suppress those things. And because we're tracking things like our, uh, efforts with the homeless, of course, we want to make sure that we are assisting the homeless with offering county services and getting them housing if needed, or getting them, um, into some of the resources we have here with people helping people, et cetera, and trying to approach that from a community caretaker standpoint. And so that's what we have to look forward to, uh, in the next six months to a year or so. Now, I'll, and I think with questions at that point?
I, I will ask counsel if they have any questions, then we'll go to public comment, and then, yeah.
I was on the, uh, the other day, I was in the office, and your motor officer stopped by to say hello to Scott. And, uh, so I was, I was wondering how much more, uh, time we can get from him, or, and if, uh, and if, uh, or what the allotment is now, I mean, he said he was gonna be coming by and giving this time.
Yeah, but, um, so you met Deputy Taylor, who was one of the Greta Motor Units, who, um, we are trying to, uh, he's obviously on a contract with Greta, and trying, and he's got his obligations, they're trying to find a way to begin introduce, reintroducing the Buellton motor. Frankly, my goal, my goal since the beginning has been to get a full-time motor sooner than later. Because of our staffing issues, we weren't able to even address that as a reasonable thing until the, the begin, end of this month, beginning of October. So, uh, our, my hope is that we will have that spot tested for, and someone assigned to it within the next forty-six weeks, but that's, I, I gotta be clear and say that's my goal. Uh, but obviously, I have staffing issues and powers that be that, uh, play into that as well. But when I say highway two forty-six traffic, I should really say my pri-, my priority is getting you a, a new motor, a new motor officer to replace Jose.
Perfect.
Because Jose is on his, on his way to retirement, right? But I know how viable that motor spot is, not only for that, but also to assist banning code enforcement and to do, uh, some of those other community events and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I, I, I know more than most, I think, how impactful that position can be.
And also, we have a, a speed trailer. Um, I don't know who operates that, I haven't seen it out for a while, but usually at the beginning of school, they put it out there to, uh, on Second Street or different spots, you know? You know, I, I, I understand we can't put it on highway two forty-six, but, uh.
I could definitely look into how we can move that around, utilize that better.
You know, also, the, the exit of town that, uh, that flying flags there, uh, uh, they really hit it hard right there in front of, even before they hit the bridge.
Yeah.
Saw some people really hightailing, I don't know if there's room to put it out there, but it'd be nice to have a reminder.
Take a look at that spot.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, questions?
Yeah, could you expand on that new law you said about the, the state is?
Sure. Try to be concise, because it's convoluted, and only, we only just got.
From the state, convoluted?
I only just got trained on it on Monday and kind of had my eyes opened, uh, to it. The state is reviewing and looking at what, what role does law enforcement play in, in our, in our monitor side, or rather, what role do we want law enforcement to play in our society? And they have the state assembly bills that have come out of this, have unequivocally said, we don't want, we don't want law enforcement involved in a situation that is mental health-related, or maybe not, um, a criminal violation whenever we can. So in situations where there might be a suicidal subject who's in their home by themselves and threatening suicide, we are, it's, it's been best practices for some time, but now it's actually codified in the law that we really, like, don't go into the house. And we don't even respond, because we don't wanna provoke an exigency where we end up in a fatal confrontation with someone just because we showed up. Whether that provokes a suicide by cop, or the cop ends up in a use of force as a protection to themselves. So the state's direction in this, in these things is very clear, like, don't go. And so that creates a dynamic that we still have to work out with, well, does fire go, or does medics go, or who goes? Do we send civilian crisis response counselors? So there's a lot of learning that's gonna go on around that sort of stuff, and that's just one example. But the state's really looking at anything that an o-, an officer does that provokes an exigency, you know, that provokes the, the confrontation to become something more than violent, what's that?
It escalates.
That escalates, and sometimes our, our very presence, regardless of who it is, just the badge and the, and the uniform escalates it. And so they're really looking at how they can discourage us from doing that.
And you said one of those most disturbing the peace?
If it, well, did I say, I didn't, if I did, I didn't mean that, but, um, it might be something where trying to give a good example, um, your neighbor is screaming and yelling and hooting, all running up a storm and, and maybe not making sense or not being sensical, right? And you call either because you're annoyed by the noise, or you're calling because you're concerned about their safety, and the first person who would normally go to dispatch something like that would be an officer. But the state's telling us to look at, well, is there a criminal violation? And most of the time, the answer's no.
Unless it's a four fifteen.
Could be, yeah, it could, which is for everyone disturbing the peace, yeah. But a four fifteen, the sense of, are they fighting? Are the, is their noise malicious and, uh, intended to, you know, annoy you, or is it just someone yelling and screaming and not making sense? So our deputies, particularly our sergeants, are gonna be cha-, uh, challenged to decide, is this actually a crime? And if it is, then we take a certain approach, and if it's not, then we actually have to back away and try and figure out how to use a different resource to solve that issue.
Yeah.
That was my expression on Monday when I got trained on it, so.
Don't even have a comment for that one. No. Did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, the comment wasn't about.
I'm sorry that you're dealing with that, and it's ridiculous, but.
I think it's a process, if we look historically, we've seen similar things come up in the past, and it's always a pendulum. Uh, and, um, you know, unintended consequences often are the result of good intentions, and I think this, this is my own opinion here, this is not my, my agency's, uh, that there's probably some unintended consequences out of some good intention in changing some of these laws in, in relation to what happened in twenty twenty and how the changes they wanted, and we're just gonna have to kind of muddle through it and see how that all goes.
Thank you.
If there's no other, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, there's no other questions, I have something else to give you.
Well, I, I know about what's coming, but before we get there, do we have any public comment on this? We do know, ma'am, I'm closing public comment, thanking you very much for the job, the service that you give to the city of Buellton, truly appreciate it. And now you can, um, now you can give us the second part of this. From going from really well to kind of a shaky to this, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate the comments about our efforts, uh, to work here in Buellton, and, um, yeah, what you're referring to is I'm, I'm actually gonna be handing over duties as your law enforcement chief to, uh, Lieutenant Mark Valencia, who is with me here tonight. We, uh, at the sheriff's office are experiencing a seismic shift in our agency's age, culture, rank. And at this point, I have been tasked with taking over our Isla Vista, uh, station. And Mark has been tapped to take my place here. Mark is a twenty-seven-year veteran of our agency, he's literally done every job in the agency, he's got the coolest stories as well, because he worked vice intel and a lot of undercover work, motorcycle gangs, all that sort of stuff. When I was brand-new, I'd go into Mark's office and just list of stories, because I, it was so, it was such cool stuff. Uh, Mark's born and raised here in the valley, he knows everybody, he's, he's really well-clued in and keyed into, uh, what's going on here, still lives here. So I, I, I have no doubt I leave you in, uh, more than capable hands, but, uh, but, uh, enjoyed my time here, it was very short, it was only six months. And then have a chance to, uh, jump into everything I wanted to jump into, but got to meet your staff and interact with your staff, who are phenomenal. I know you know that, but they are absolutely phenomenal, and I've had a great time getting to know the, yeah, the chamber here and your business owners and your, your residents, and you know this, I said this beginning, you already know this, but you have a wonderful place here, and I, uh, I really, really enjoyed my time here. And I'll, uh, turn it over to Mark, so he can introduce himself a little bit further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Welcome. Well, thank you, some of you remember me, I did the, uh, mid-year, uh, crime stat, low-level crime stats for, uh, Lieutenant. And I continue, um, we found out about our transfer on Tuesday, so this is the way it works. So please be patient while I get my feet underneath me, but I've worked with many of you before, and I've been around, uh, quite a bit throughout the valley, so I'll be able to keep the ball moving forward, and hopefully, they'll meet your expectations and getting the job done. If you have any questions, don't, I'll have an open line, and I think we start the third?
No, Monday.
Yeah, Monday. On paper, it's the third, but it's Monday.
Funny at time.
Yeah, so let's, uh, we'll keep the ball moving, I'll keep working with you, there's, there's really gonna be no change, the handout should be smooth, it'll be quick, and, uh, hopefully, it just stays the way it is, and but if you have any questions, I'll have an open line communication, I'll be present. And any issues or concerns, please bring them to my attention, and I'll run them with the chain of command if I can handle them directly. So I'm looking forward to it, it's gonna be fun, I've, I've done this without being assigned here, so now I'm officially assigned here, so it'll be, it'll be easier, and I think we'll work collectively on other problems we have in foreseeable future, I'll bring the issues to you if we have any on our emails.
Terrific. Well, we welcome you, we wish you the best of luck in Isla Vista, I, I have to say, this has been the most communicative, would you say? When there's an incident that happens, council has been made aware of it almost immediately, and we've, we've.
Much appreciated.
It's very much appreciated, and, and it's something that we didn't always have, and so it, it means a lot. We get calls all the time from our residents, emails, texts, and it's so nice to be able to tell them, oh, well, this is happening. You know, you can't get into it, but it's, it seems like the, the, I know the sheriff's department has been part of the city of Buellton forever, but it just gets better and better, and we really appreciate it.
It's a collective effort, so we'll keep, continue that going, and like I said, once I get my feet underneath me, give me a couple days, uh, we'll just be right back on track.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
I might know, I don't, not yet.
What? Not since Tuesday?
How long have I known you, Mark? Like, twenty-five years, probably.
Sure.
Nice to see you, welcome. Yeah, welcome, yeah.
And Isla Vista will be a little different for you.
It's, uh.
Are you gonna, are you gonna be in the office here?
It's, it's a different demographic in Hotfield, but it's everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna have your office someday, and they're gonna come to you to hear the stories.
That's, yeah, someday, someday.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard to imagine being here that as long as he has our head.
Well, it was way too short in Buellton, and we appreciate your service.
I appreciate it, kind words, you've all been such, so enjoyable to work with.
Thank you.
You made it enjoyable.
Thank you, appreciate that. I, I, and I'm gonna, I have to leave, I just got notified of something more that I'm needed at.
Of course.
Not Buellton-related.
Of course.
But thank you, Walter.
Thank you very much. Okay, well.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess, you too.
Okay, so we'll move on, I know, uh, Officer Valencia is getting cards, and I think Dave disappeared to get one. Uh, but in the meantime, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, progress drawings for library improvement plans at two oh two Dairyland, and Director Hess's got this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member City Council. So at your meeting in July fourteenth, the council, um, consensus was to move forward with architectural plans and renderings, uh, to a scheme B two. And with that, we have Mr. Marchi here tonight, we have. And with that, we have Mr. Marchy here tonight. We have as in yours, in the staff report attachment one, which includes. The preliminary set of plans as well as three D modeling. Pictures from uh what he's been working on so far. And with that, uh, he'll go over the plans and discuss that with you. Um, and then we are looking for council direction to move forward, um, if this is amenable. Thank you, Brett.
Welcome, Mr. Marchy.
Yes, council.
You've been working.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I've got him up from the packet though. Is that kind of, you just try to.
It's in the bottom.
You wanna start with the plan first or? So there's just been some minor changes from the last version. We created a, an exit corridor. Along here. So that people in the living rooms could go out and come in without going through the library. And then we separated, we. Set up a folding wall. To create two, two rooms and uh different sizes and you can open it all the way up.
The children's center?
No, that, that's been the same. That's pretty much it. Uh, and then. I got into trying to. Result of the same access and that's. Quite a challenge with this setup.
What access?
ADA.
Yeah, disabled access, um. And so this whole area of patio. Is gonna have to come out and be reord back in with new steps and ramps to get this thing to work right. So basically this whole wraparound. Concrete areas coming out and getting reord. That's pretty much all it's changed. And then we just. If you wanna flip to the models, um.
Is it steps to, what's the? Why is it, is it the elevation of the?
Yeah, it's, uh.
Is it because it there's goes to stairway?
It's about twelve inches. Step down to uh grade. Or or walkway level as you approach the building and so we have to get up that twelve inches which. Equates to about a twelve foot ramp. And everything has to be accessible, so it creates ramps and there's a lot of doors. So, you know, we have to create accessibility at all these doors. Is that doable w- w- without demoing that porch? Not really. I mean, you know, when you get into, uh. I mean, contractors can. Maybe give you a better idea, but I, whenever you try and work with existing, it just doesn't work out. You know, you're patching everything in and. And there's, there's brick borders with the concrete and it it just creates all kinds of problems.
Right. So are you, are you duplicating, just doing the same size porch?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Wouldn't it be a good time to double the size of the porch or make it, make it bigger? I mean, just if we're gonna pour any porch, I mean. If it's ten feet, why don't we make it twenty feet or make it something? That like on the south side that would be. So I'm just, I'm just saying.
I I don't know. I mean, it's not really in the program, so I mean, that this is something new that we can do.
Yeah, so my, what, what I was. I would, I'd like to see more. Or future expansion, so if if we made the.
Like sitting space?
Yeah, more, more of a nice patio and we could have something really nice there, all the whole. I'm gonna, you know, I'm I'm the south guy. Wanted everything on the south side.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but but literally where if we have it. That that could become. A nice huge porch that we could do. Would be for. Garden, you know, other, you know, meetings or even, you know, hanging out instead of sitting inside, you could sit out there and. And uh. You know, parties or whatever, you could have a. Dance out there if you wanted or or some kind of a.
If you can give me an idea on size, I can.
Something that we can.
I think, John, we probably have to take another look at it. But you know, I I'm kind of thinking along the same line that John is rather than demo that and just put it back in the same, basically. An ADA configuration, maybe we can like what's John saying is it make that just bigger and then incorporate the ADA in it. Well, yeah, I mean, expanding it doesn't affect the ADA. I I can do that. I've already addressed getting up and down to all the doors. Right. Um, and if you, if you go back to the plan view, I can show you, uh.
That would be great.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the children's uh. Part of the library can expand outside, you know, use that for, for some.
We want, we want to be able to put tables and chairs and have people grab a book and sit outside, look at the view, have a cup of coffee. So, yeah.
To further clarify, are you looking at expanding? The, the. Overhang with the patio cover as well, or are you just talking about? Okay, just an open patio.
So let, let me. Also ask you, is this is what you're doing for ADA, well, the view that we have now? The view that we have now, because I can see it here on my screen.
Yeah.
So this is your ADA compliance. With, with your ramps and such that say at the top, top left. That's a ramp there. There's another ramp. So this is what you're trying to reconfigure this. Yeah, but you, what I'm saying is, is there's no way with that existing ramp, you can incorporate that in there.
No.
Or you would have to. No, 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 what I'm saying is because it doesn't, because those are steps right there, right? Where those ramps are. I I can expand this out very easily and this ramp takes care of it and this ramp takes care of it. So it won't affect this layout. It'll just extend that.
The exterior.
Yeah, and and the accessibility is there.
I have to tell you, I love the interior.
But I kind of want to beat this dog a little bit more, um. I ca- I don't have it in my mind quite. What it looks like. From the few times that I've been here. But there's no way that that you gone out there and looked at it and said. We can do this without demoing that existing concrete. You know. All the years I've been doing this, uh, you know, I've. You you always think, gosh, how can I save the client money? And so you you do these drawings and you work around all this existing stuff. The contractor comes out and he goes. Tear it out. He says, this is such a labor intensive waste of time, materials cheaper, just do it right. It all looks. Yeah, and and it just, I can't tell you how many times I've wasted my energy trying to save things and I I feel for you. I understand. Yeah, well, it's our job to save our account money. Yeah, I mean, that's just what I wanted to clarify before you go on. Do you, you know, one thing that would help is do you have a budget?
Budget?
Budget, what's, what's a budget?
This point of the game, we have not put any. Monetary limits.
Really nice and then there's basic and there's a lot in between and it it's kind of. We're gonna be reaching the point where I'm gonna start the construction drawings and all that stuff's gonna get spelled out and. You don't want to have. More than you can afford and then we gotta go back and change everything and, you know, it would just be nice to have a.
And see.
A general number or?
And art. As a council, we don't have any idea what the cost of all this is to be able to say, oh, that's too high or. No, that's spot on. We, we don't know. What the cost is entail, what cost entailment is in this right now.
Okay, so there's no allotment that you have sitting in a pile somewhere? Just, okay.
General fund.
All right, I'll have to. I'll have to come up with a.
No, just we, we, we would like a general idea of what this would cost.
Yeah.
To decide.
It's really hard right now because of the way things have changed and.
And it's constantly changing.
Yeah, I mean, everything is pretty much unacceptable right now when you see the numbers, so. And when you look at the three D versions, if we can go to the three D versions, um. You, you know, it's fun when you're working with three D modeling because you can. You, you, you know, you can put the nicest things in there and and. Basically, the furniture that you have in the existing library is sort of like army surplus and. And I was told to use that, so I I don't know if you're gonna use that when you go in there, because if you are.
We're hoping not.
Yeah, it's gonna be pretty rough.
We're hoping not.
So, um.
Is it possible for you to give us a couple of scenarios, like one, how you have it engineered currently? Two, if you were to engineer it with.
More patio.
More patio and then one maybe value engineering, like not the nicest furniture and using what we have just to kind of give us a. Like, I'm not saying change walls or anything, but I'm talking like fixtures, because I know a fixture can be from, you know. Twenty dollars to two hundred dollars depending on. Door handle, you want that type of thing, so.
Well, there's, um. Yeah, you know, when you get, there are stages of the drawings, you know, we're in the preliminary stage now, so if I go to design development, I spell out a lot more of the project, but it's not. You know, material specs and that kind of thing and that's when it helps. Because I'm not an expert on estimating right now. I don't know if anybody is other than, you know. The, I mean, the contractors I'm working with are shocked every time they get a bid. So. We might be able to sit down with a contractor and do a little value engineering, but they're gonna charge for that, but. It would go a long way to. Understanding this.
Well, that makes sense, doesn't it?
And then finishing the drawings based on that recommendation would help considerably, I think.
Yeah.
Because I, just as an example, these lights are really cool looking. It's expensive. And, uh, you know, it's, uh. You can put in general lighting, you know, which is kind of boring, but, uh.
I just, I just think the way you set this up, I know it's three D and we don't know the cost, but. Oh, my gosh. It's, it's just, it's something the city would be really, really proud.
Well, it it's come out well and it's nice when you clear out the walls, uh. Which you end up with.
Yeah, yeah, just amazing.
Madam Mayor, I think what we can do too, once we can get consensus as to. The, the basic design and like you said, we could do estimates, you know, with an expanded patio without. Um, but at least the core part of the architecture and the buildings, the walls, the layout. We can come up with a, a general ballpark cost spent on that. For the. Building improvements and then we can look at a ballpark cost of that type of. Of, um, you know. Fixtures and furniture. And, you know, to give us a range and then go from there and, you know, look at, you know, like our Ikea hacks or, you know, whatever we need to do to. Get the look that we want to achieve and look at the different ranges without giving you a ballpark, but for now at least give us. This will give us an idea.
I don't want it to look.
Industrial.
Junk, you know, our, our furniture from the library right now, if we put that in there. It's an improvement, but if we're gonna do it. It'd be nice to do it.
It wouldn't look new, yeah.
No, no. No.
Out of place, but.
Fixtures and I'm just throwing out numbers here, but like. This fixture could be fifteen thousand dollars or if you get something similar, that could be five, you know. And those are the value engineering differences that we can make as long as we're all.
I, the fixtures beautiful, but your, your rendition, this three D rendition is just incredible.
Yeah, oh, but. Madam Mayor, I think a lot of that is irrelevant and something that's down the road. I think really what we're trying to do is get the configuration. I mean, what we put in there, I mean. What he did is just use a three D and said, oh, yeah, let's put this here and that.
Oh, yeah.
I think really what we're looking at is configuration now or not.
The building itself.
Right, and not, you know, furniture is gonna be way down the road somewhere, so that's kind of the. Right, okay, um. Can we go back to the plan again? I want to bring up a point here, um. So, um. I'm sorry. Mister Sanchez, uh. This, uh. This room here, and he was talking about. Visibility of the mountains and all this and. I'm just keeping the existing windows in there. There, there's a problem with this building. I've got my structural engineer looking at it. And when I. I didn't see the plans before we hit on the project and now that I've seen the plans and I mentioned this last time, structurally this thing is. I, I'm not sure it would fly today if it were run through plan check, um, and now it's gonna become a public building. It takes on a whole nother. Level of concern, so. This window. You know, I can make this a full height window, but it's not openly up this whole south wall and if I do, I run into some steel frame issues and.
I already lost that deal.
Yeah, it's too bad they built it that way, but.
I think we're all pretty happy with the configuration, you know, maybe with the exception of expanding the patio like.
I just want, my, my idea was to keep the, the whole of the living room. More of the, of a. Something we could use.
Yeah, well, I mean.
The library is closed.
Yeah.
So we had a divider, we, with it, the, the days that the library is closed. If that front of that room. You could put in a separation in, or you know, even the little, those gates like in a store. You know, it's at the airport and store closes down, they drop the gate. And then. You have. If, if all the books were, were you're standing to me. That area behind you could be usable space. On days that the library wasn't open. I, that's what was my, the reason I wanted that. South side.
I, I, I got that, right?
But now there's a patio, you can just to go out.
Yeah, the patio will be nice. No, I, your, your plan, your diagram is, is well done.
Okay, well, um. And then did you want to do anything more in that garage area? Was there something? About a division?
We were talking about dividing it, um, the city manager suggested that the friends of the library could have. A book area with like. People could go in and purchase. Books, used books. With just a little piece of that garage.
Do you want a physical wall there or just leave it open?
I don't know that we need a physical wall.
I don't think so many, I, I think if anything, we put another corrugated in there.
You could still. You could still have a meeting room in there for a community center, but if there are shelves of books in a corner. On one end, I don't think that's gonna interfere with the meeting room.
Okay, that's nothing to do with.
What I, I was talking with Scott about is, uh, but I was. I would like to have glass doors there.
Where is that on the?
Uh, where the garage, where the garage store is.
Incorporate that whole driveway to be part of. So that, so that would be a ball patio and also have, um. Run the conduit out, even if it was just between the building and the. And the brick. There's a little green belt there. If we had enough conduit to come out, so we could have a fountain and some more lights. And kind of. And that's just, that's just, um.
Yeah, I can put a feed out to the.
But it, but if we're, if we're gonna.
To the driveway, yeah.
You know, to the, whatever line we decided out to use the driveway for patio. So you could sit out there and. You know, like if you go to the hospital, the back of the hospital.
I don't think we should make that any smaller than garage because.
Okay.
Can have pretty big meetings in there.
Yeah, all right.
I mean, it's, you know, you could put in. Dividers at a later date, but I don't think you should put any kind of a barrier in there because you could have pretty big meetings. In that garage from what I remember.
Okay. I just wanted to have the utility to be able to come out.
Yeah, I mean, that's easy. Crunch it and water it out.
Yeah, for future, we want to help.
It's, you mentioned something about coffee. I mean, is there any kind of, uh. Coffee stand or something you want?
The friends of the library would like to be able to sell coffee, tea. Uh, bottles of water and then, you know, cookies or croissant, you know. I just think a kitchen would be way too. I just think a kitchen would be way too expensive, but if we had a area to just plug in like a coffee pot or a little mini refrigerator.
We've already got a staff over kitchen there, I don't know.
Yeah, so maybe we could use that, yeah. Yeah, I just wanna, my, when I leave council, my goal is to really get the friends of the library rolling. It's been, since COVID, it's pretty much non-existent.
Okay.
And raise money to help pay for a lot of this.
Usually when, uh, my, my background is doing a lot of financial institutions and some of the pinks provide coffee to their customers. Wow, you can't believe what a mess that makes to that.
Yeah, no, this wouldn't be where the customers help themselves, no, no.
Alright, well, um. Yeah, so you just wanna go through the rest of the three Ds, I, I think I've got everything I need, um. But like I said, budget's kind of a critical thing to, you know, so I, I don't wanna.
Oh, yeah.
On too big a tangent, and then just go, wow, he wasted all his time on these plans, so we need to. Kind of step through this right, but, um. The structural aspect, I, once I get some more information from my structural engineer, I'll know how extensive the upgrades are gonna be. And, um, hopefully they aren't gonna be that bad. But, um, I, I'm assuming that we're gonna replace all the air conditioning and heating in the building, because it's all residential. And the code has changed considerably, requiring more air to, you know, more changes of air and all this stuff, so. We'll be upgrading all that. I don't think there's gonna be anything major other than that, but if you're good with this, I'm ready to get rolling here and move to the next stage and.
It's beautiful, I understand it's the same amount of books that are in the library currently, but the library is not ADA compliant. And this will be, the shelves will be farther apart.
Well, there's more, I think I.
Is there more?
Like fifteen percent more.
Okay.
Shelving.
Wonderful.
There, there's more, the kids area is kind of tight, but, uh, it's what they have now. So.
No, I, I love the reading area around the fireplace. Um, I like the lighting, if we could find something like that, that wasn't crazy expensive.
Maybe there are certain things you spend a little more on, and you know, that's a.
I mean, that's kind of a statement, the lighting. I just, your, your, your rendition of it, I just, it's, it's like, people are gonna wanna go in there and sit down and read a book.
Well, it has a real living room effect, and that's what it is, the living room, so it's just gonna expand it a little bit. So.
Yeah.
Alright, well.
Everybody's good with the structural.
Yes.
Cause all, all this is after the fact.
Yes, well, yeah, furniture, tables, chairs, that's, that's, once we get the building. Uh, I like the idea of the flooring, I think that's, that looks like low maintenance. And easy to get around if you're in a wheelchair, or, you know, I just, I.
You're familiar with the new luxury vinyl woods?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate in, you know, places like this, they wear really well, you know, they look nice and they're not too expensive. And then some carpet, obviously, but, uh.
No, I like that.
Yeah, so, and then the exterior, there's one area where the kitchen has a little bay window at the sink. And it, it's raised up, it doesn't go all the way to the ground, initially I was gonna put a window seat there, and I realized that it's just a little pop out. And so I don't mess up the exterior of the, you know, this building, I'm gonna frame a wall across it. Black the windows out, they'll, they'll just be sort of obscured, you won't see it. And it, it's just an easy way to save you probably five grand, ten grand, tearing this thing off, replastering, trying to get it to match and. You know, it, it's up to you, but that was just.
I have an, uh, an idea, if, if council's amenable to closing that from the inside, so that it's, you know, flush wall. Um, I have an idea of the use on the exterior portion of it. Yeah, display noticing when.
And this is on the. Riverside of the kitchen? The little. Okay, yeah, yeah, the little where their dining room was.
Um, it's actually by the sink, look out the sink, so it's a little area by the sink.
Okay, by the sink, yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's kind of a weird thing, but it's done a lot in commercial projects, you, you know, if you're trying not to trash the outside of a building.
But we can utilize it still.
Trust whatever you.
My sandwich right there, you already figured it out.
Yeah, we just made her the lights.
Perfect.
We don't need a friend, huh? Yeah.
I, I have a question, maybe, um. Legal might know, if, can we go in this library? When the library is closed?
It's gonna be really hard with Alison, we're under Greta's umbrella, we'd have to get an okay. Uh, Carpentry is working on an idea right now that allows their patrons in after hours, so.
If you have somebody there, it's like.
So, yeah, it, it, it would be a matter of how we set up the lease.
Right, and that's what, that's my, my whole intention is giving away the, giving away the building to somebody on that. They're, they're in our building, right, and I, I, and there, there shouldn't be a reason we couldn't go in and do it.
We'd have to figure it out, yeah.
Yeah, but that's what we, we'd like to check out.
Carpentry is doing, working on it right now for theirs.
We're not gonna go steal their books.
Well, there's computers in there, there's all kinds of, you know. Our, our lighting could disappear.
Anyway, I just might. I'd like to be able to go in and.
Yeah.
Enjoy, and maybe we should just have.
And that could, wow. We're gonna, we're, yeah, we're gonna start with, with what we've got right now, and then we can add on to.
Basically, the, the buildings is.
So, the next thing I'll do is get to design development, work with Rose and Scott, and then. Uh, we can talk about possibly sitting down with a contractor, or, or seeing if we can get some sort of, I mean, I can also. Work with a, an estimating company that does this, and we can, you know, we can get a, an idea that way. Um, and they're usually a little high, so, you know, that might be a better way to go, so.
Okay, yeah, we honestly, I, I have no idea what something like this. And cost would be, I have no idea, um, it's absolutely stunning, it's beautiful, but, yeah, I'd. I'm, I am so pro library that council's probably very happy that I'm stepping down in December. And I won't be, I won't be the thorn in the side saying, yeah, just. Let's just do it. Will you do that for me? Thank you.
Well, it, you know, I mean, maybe you can faze some of the meeting room stuff if it ends up being too costly, but, you know, I don't know what's more important, but, uh. You will be surprised by the number, unfortunately.
Yeah, I believe it. Well, thank you, do we have any public comment on this one, Linda?
We don't.
Okay, closing public comment, any more comments for Mister Marching?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, beautiful job, beautiful job, thank you. Alrighty, agenda item number nine, allocation of funding sources for the reservoir two roof repairs, Ms. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, and a, a good segue to the, um, variable costs. We're bringing for to tonight, uh, this is the latest, um, cost estimate we receive. As Tetra Tech has been working on the design for reservoir two roof. As you recall, council, uh, provided direction to move forward with a, the aluminum roof. Um, cause that is one of the longest lifespans of the material choices, also one of the pricier ones. But as we're, we have gone through, um. We've approved the thirty percent plan, so we're moving forward to the sixty percent plan design. Um, and the cost estimate for construction that was provided to us. Um, has increased from the one point two million dollars. Uh, again, when we brought the original cost estimate, everything's conceptual based on just generalizations. Um, so, we're, we refine the cost as we've been moving forward, so this is a little more realistic number. Having started actual design now with structural and working with the, the manufacturer of the actual steel, aluminum roof company. Uh, the construction portion has increased to one point seven, two million. Uh, a lot of the cost has to do with, uh. The columns, the structural columns and the footings required, so. At the onset of design, they started, started reviewing and actually looking at the numbers and the structural, um, requirements for the roof. Uh, that was the big portion of the cost, so the, the columns that's existing in. The reservoir are not able to be reutilized for their roof. So new columns and, and spread footings is what's required in order to provide that roof structure. So that's the nature of the, the cost change. Our design, construction management's still within the ballpark of what we estimated previously, but that does bring the total. Cost, uh, from design, construction and construction management to, uh, just over one point nine million dollars on there. So we've outlined various funding sources that we have available, um, in the Water Enterprise Fund, we do have a. Reserve balance of approximately three million dollars. Uh, there's the ARPA funds that the city has an allocation of, and that is approximately one million dollars. And then the other potential funding sources is if the council's interested in looking at, um, state agency loans, so there is. The state offers the low interest revolving loans, um, to various municipalities, it can be, it'd be a fixed rate over. Twenty, thirty, forty, up to forty years, depending on the nature of the loan. Um, timing is a little bit long on those, I haven't been able to. Get a specific and straight answer, um, when I've asked questions from the agencies, they have navigation, they've moved forward, but there isn't enough. Information on there, and that has been provided to me as far as timing, I know applications are due by December of this year for this. Fiscal year of twenty-two to twenty-three. But I, there's, the, I'm, I'm not sure if funding doesn't come to us until June of twenty twenty-three or not. Um, and we're looking to be in construction by, um, early of next year of twenty twenty-three, by spring. And have groundbreaking. Uh, the, the last resort is alternatively, the general fund may loan money to the water fund, it's a discretionary fund, but it can't. Be used to just wholly pay off items from water sewer, because those are enterprise funds that's supposed to be self-sufficient. They can be loaned to the fund, and then we would have to, uh, make payments back to it, so we give a loan to ourselves essentially. Um, so, and that's, for, uh, those details, we still need to look at, uh, and investigate a little bit further. What and how that would be, you know, worked through. Um, but with that, um, open it to council discussion to see how you would like to move forward.
Okay, first of all, any questions for Rose?
Oh, yeah, the, the state agency loan, you said that, that, is that timeframe, or is that something? How long would that take, that we say, we just say we wanna get a million dollars of it on a loan, or?
I, I'm, I don't have the answer for that tonight, I haven't been able to get, um, anything confirmed from the. Organizers of contact.
What the percentage is on those loans?
Uh, well, it ranges from one point two to about two point five, and then, and one of the emails that I received recently was. Let's see, I believe. Um, looked at one point one percent for twenty twenty-two, so, I mean, they're, they're a good rate.
Yeah, so, but if, if, if we wanted to, could we start the loan process, and then if. And then worry about.
Withdrawn if we needed to.
I mean, it'll be rolling.
We could do that.
And then, and then, cause I, I, I thought that the cheaper loan would be worth the money, and then we could pay it, pay it back, we had to, but. The annual cost would be, wouldn't be so severe than just taking all, you know, the whole house fund out of it. So, we could, we'd have that, we'd also have our money there for, uh, something that we. That's just my idea, but I don't, and I don't know how much we could make the grant, we'd go for the whole thing, or half it, or I don't know what the deal is.
Yes, we, we can go for the whole amount, uh, and that was one of the questions I had, um, with the representative. For this program, uh, you know, to see exactly how much we could ask for, um, if it's just for this item.
Do we need matching funds for a grant, or?
Well, this, this wouldn't be a grant, it would be.
This is the loan, okay, not a grant.
We don't need to have.
Do, are there any grants out there?
Nothing that would work within our timeframe, okay.
Can I just make sure I'm understanding correctly, we already have one million available in ARPA funds that aren't allocated for other projects yet? There's, you know, that could be. Okay, so we have one million already in ARPA funds, we're looking at meeting nine hundred and sixty-five.
If I may add, the exact number that's available from ARPA is nine hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred ten dollars. So that's a remaining balance of one million forty-three thousand four hundred ninety.
Okay, thank you, and what would the impact to the general fund be if we were to loan to ourselves, like, would it be a hardship?
Um, it wouldn't be a hardship, but just so council's aware, we are coming back. And the next couple of meetings to ask for something else that would use the reserve money from. So, uh, that's up to council, but it's a significant amount of money that we're gonna ask for in the future.
So it's kind of unavailable, so.
Um, yeah, in a way you can say that, especially since we're considering other, uh, capital projects in the future.
Okay, so our best, in terms of finances for the city as a whole, would be a low interest loan.
Cause part of that will be getting back and then sure, if it's sitting there like we go, like, just say we earned one, and we paid two, then it would really only cost us, well, that's. I don't know the fact number, but.
Okay, my, did you, I've got a couple of questions, did you have some, uh, the ARPA money, that's general fund money, correct? No, it is not general fund money, it is in its current fund, we have its own fund, O thirty-two. And it's restricted because, uh, the federal government put restrictions on it, and this is one of the uses that we can use it for, it's not general. Okay, so we do have the nine hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred ten dollars that we could use for the ARPA. You said we have three million in the water fund, what is, what, I know we have some capital improvement projects. What is the three million already dedicated to that?
No, it is not, we, the, um, I, the three million is, um. Not in excess, but that's.
Right.
Often, right.
So, we could, I mean, basically, we're talking about eight hundred thousand more than what we had started with. So if we use the ARPA money for this, that takes care of it, cause we've already allocated the one point two million for the project. So we're looking for eight hun- about eight hundred thousand more, give or take, so we could use ARPA money for that, or the extra. Uh, money sitting in the enterprise fund underwater, um, you know, we borrowed all that money from NG, and I'm really, really glad we did. I was very much in favor of that, but one of the things I've always really respected about our city is that we pay our bills. You know, when we need a new vehicle, we don't make payments, we go out and we get the vehicle, and it's really nice if you don't go in debt. Um, I realize one point, one point two to two and a half percent is really low, and if you got the money, you could put it in a bank and maybe earn. Some interest on that, I don't know, um, the other question I have is, wasn't our option two concrete? I mean, this was, we wanted to use the aluminum, because this was the best use of funds. But from the one point two we allocated, we're up to almost two million now, and there's no saying that that's gonna. Slow down.
Right, concrete's, um, was the second choice, because it has, um, the same length of the lifespan as well, and. Uh, in the original cost estimate, it was only less by about two hundred thousand, um, and again. That's, well, yeah, we don't know.
We're still getting on cost. Still need the pillars there, I mean, that's not gonna change, so, okay.
Okay, I just, just asking questions, yeah.
I think my, my, I would be in favor of not taking a loan if possible, we've already allocated the one point two, and we're only looking for the eight. And we have the ARPA funds, and we need to spend the ARPA funds, that would be my.
If, if I may clarify, I don't think if the one point two was allocated. Um, because it was, I think it was figure out the cost of it and come back for funding, uh, we only, um. Is that correct, Rose?
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay, so the one point two hasn't been committed to.
Yes, that was just our, our original estimate for.
Okay.
That type of roof.
Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor, you had questions before I go to public comment?
Well. Chanel, do you do the math of, of, when I did it here myself, and maybe you did it as well. Put a man on this, got one of those forty-year loans, I went in the middle of two percent. About seventeen hundred bucks a month. on the payments.
Um, I.
Forty years, cause we can get a forty-year from.
See interest on it, not the.
Well, I want a two-point, I want a two-point. I divided four hundred eighty, which is the the length of the loan and the eight hundred thousand, excuse me. And then divided that, it would be about seventeen hundred dollars a month. Is that, did you do anything like that when?
Um, I did it on the higher one, um, but I did not do it at the one point five. Let me do that one real quick.
I did it at two. I just split the difference, cause you said anywhere between one-five and two-five. So I split the difference and made it a two percent. But it wouldn't be that much more. I mean, it's nominal.
So if we, if we had to use the ARPA, the ARPA funds, and we find out the one million four three four ninety, I'm just using a payment calculator online. For the forty years, uh, you're looking at a monthly payment of three thousand one hundred sixty approximately.
Yeah, I do. I did it at eight hundred thousand. That's, that's okay. All right, I get it.
I think we should take what we have. We have the nine K in ARPA, and then we have three million reserved in the Water Enterprise Fund. We use one, Water Enterprise Fund, one million of a general fund, and then I mean, uh, ARPA. One, one million and then ARPA. Or the, you know, the one million and change of the enterprise fund, so that we're not having financing.
Certainly.
Chanel, you said that we're looking at some, or maybe Rose will know this, that we're looking at some other projects for that fund, right, Aznel? Is that what I heard you say?
Um, general fund is what.
Yeah, general fund.
Or but you, so you're not using the ARPA for, you don't have something down the road.
ARPA hasn't been allocated as far as I'm aware.
We've allocated three hundred thousand of ARPA money towards uh one of the sewer projects. I can't remember from the top of my head. Uh, because we received one point two million of ARPA, and we allocated three hundred thousand. Let me see what that was for.
Nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Ish.
Right.
It was for uh wastewater facility improvement, including uh lift stations, skate-up pump blowers. Um, and, oh. That wasn't, I looked at the wrong one. So this was for a power generator for the wastewater treatment plant and lift station.
Yeah, that's important.
Okay, uh, Linda, do we have uh opening up public comment? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for uh discuss funding source options and provide staff with direction. Shall we, shall we initiate the loan? I, it doesn't hurt to initiate it, but to see what we can, what we can use, staff funding, the ARPA funding and either a general fund loan, which I'm not as excited about as just using enterprise money.
The other thing too is the interest rate on money in the bank is going to be increasing. You know, there's gonna, all this.
Being married to a banker, next banker, you know this.
I just watch TV, but but the uh the, if your, if your loan is going up, you're, you can also get more, but more percent for your money. So if the, if if we can get it tied in, I'm dreaming of one point five, and at some point we can get two percent on the money we own, then it's gonna be free. I mean, not free, but it's gonna be.
Not for forty years. Not a forty, if you went with the forty-year loan, the the bank is gonna change a lot.
I just, I don't know, maybe, maybe not, but we could also start paying it back more too, if the loan doesn't have forty years. We pay our loans back faster than that. Um, all the time.
I just, I just uh I, I hate owing money.
I just like using other people's money, and if it's, you know, that's my idea. If um, that's, that was my opinion on it.
Okay, so you're in favor of going for the loan? Vice Mayor?
Well, I I kinda like to see what it would be going forward, you know, if they did that, what kind of, you know, payment it would be for us as well. And if it's really something unreasonable, then I'd be in favor of just pulling the trigger and paying for it.
So going into checking out the loan.
The numbers.
Check out the loan, and then we can decide what, you know, with the current interest rate. I know you've given us a uh one point, what, one point five to two point five, but you know, if we borrow so much money to get this done, if, is everybody in favor of using the ARPA money for this, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we use the ARPA money, and then we figure out what the what repayment would be on a loan and how fast we could get the loan, because we do want this thing. It it needs to be finished.
Okay.
Is that sound?
So it's yeah, and I agree with you. I think we need to pull the trigger on the next meeting.
Yeah, hate that term.
The um
that was a cop, we expect.
I know, you and um, never mind. Um, do you have direction?
I believe we do.
Okay, then we're moving on to the city manager's report. Ms. Samora, would you please give us the city manager's report?
Yes, I only have two items. Um, I'll start with the first item, and um council member Sanchez already mentioned this. Uh, the city of Bilton has received the twenty twenty-two Helen Putnam Award for excellence in economic development through the arts. Uh, the award was announced at the League of Cities Annual Conference on September eighth. Any formal presentation of the award will take place in October. Um, the League of Cities will be present and award the city. Um, and then the second um item is a reminder to review the city council manual. Uh, and if you have any comments or proposed changes, uh, please email Scott. Um, by five o'clock or five PM on October third, he will compile all these comments and changes to bring to city council for adoption on October thirteenth. And that concludes the city manager's report.
I I had a comment on the um on the award, I'd like to um invite the people that uh that were in the uh the arts, all the ones that had their art, their artwork, like the statue.
To be here when Dave Mullins makes the presentation.
I don't know, we'll do something more special than.
Have a cake.
Have a cake.
Have a cake.
Maybe we could have a meeting at five thirty and do cake, or or else we could just, like I said, it'd be nice to have the people that have been doing all the artwork to have them.
To thank them.
Get the award, because they're the ones that gave us the art. That's why. It's great. Maybe we could work on it.
Any other questions from our pro tem city manager? No questions? Alrighty, thank you very much. Good long.
You're welcome.
Managing, and with that, I adjourn this meeting until Thursday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.